Invite Pastor Walworth to bring the invocation for us. Thank you for coming tonight in this cold temperature.
Nothing too.
All right. Thank you.
If you're dressed properly. Well, thank you for inviting me. Now let's pray. Dear Father, as we gather here tonight in the spirit of cooperation, we ask for your divine protection and your divine will throughout this brand-new year of 2024. We pray, Lord, for a spirit of cooperation within the entire city of Perry and the council, Lord, that they would do not necessarily what's good, but what's right. We ask that you would bless them, encourage them, Lord, throughout this year in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Hey, Bob.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, are you?
Good. Happy New Year. Well, we do have a quorum in attendance, so I'll call the meeting to order here at 7:00 PM and invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take the vocals, please?
Here, Hammond.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Mike Cottrell.
Here.
Kina Dunn. Chad Ford.
Kina did let us know earlier today that she was ill and wouldn't be here. So she is excused, as well as Chad. Looking now for approval of our agenda.
Remove that the agenda be adopted is printed.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The council meeting minutes of December 21st, we need those approved.
Remove that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the December 21st, 2023 regular council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next thing on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone -- or, excuse me, pre-approved reports and presentations. I don't think we have anybody here for that. So then into public comment. I don't think we have anybody here for that either. So moving to communications. Shirley, do we have any communications? Mayor reports and department head reports. I did get a text from Robert Kittle. He told us last meeting that he would check to see where the antique truck was purchased by, and his text says this, "The truck was sold to Mitchell's Farm in Holly, and they're going to use it for displays." And it sounds like they're going to use it in parades. So it continues its parade history. So that's nice. We did get the money for that. And moving now to our department head reports. Who wants to go first? Megan.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you.
Last time we were here, we went over the audit. Everything has been filed appropriately as of the 12/31 deadline. The F-65 has been filed. My Act 51 reporting for end-up road funding has been filed, and a couple other year-end reports that are just delayed until the audit's approved. So those are all set and filed. Other than that, I don't have a lot to report to you tonight. Just a reminder to all residents that the city hall can no longer sell dog licenses. The county has changed the software they're using, with no longer allowing remote sales to any other municipalities. That's signed in that. If you want to purchase a dog license, you have to do it at the county courthouse opening at the treasurer's office on the second floor. That's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Megan? Thank you, Megan. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll start with Precision Roofing. We had some gutters installed here that were taken out by the tornado. It's been a long road to get here and get them on-site to do the work. And unfortunately, they installed gutters that were in the wrong color. They are mismatched to the ones that are on this side of the building, and we are working on a resolve for that issue. I'm not real impressed. I don't want to pull up a light scope of colors on our historic iconic building here. So they're probably going to end up tearing them off and replacing them with the right color, is where I'm going. I did mention to them, which I'd have to bring back to council, that if they're willing to eat half the cost of replacing the second side of the building with matching gutters, that we would share the cost to do that because it was their mistake and not ours. But I would need council approval to purchase the gutters for the second half of the building and have it all match and look nice. So we can discuss that further at a later date.
So the color of the new ones looks okay.
Exactly.
It's just that it's different from this side.
Yes.
And so since these are old, if they were willing to put new ones over here that match that color for half the cost?
Yes.
That's what we'll talk about.
That's kind of what I talked about with them. And we're still working toward a resolve, like I said. They haven't responded back to me since we've been back from our New Year's break.
Okay.
So I'm still waiting to hear from them and figure out what they're going to do. They haven't submitted a billion either, so I know it's not -- they're not thinking they're done. I know we talked a little bit last time about the tornado siren. It is installed, completed, tested. Everything is functional with the new tornado siren. And loud, it's very loud. Still waiting to hear from Midwest Treaty about the brush grinding. They told me once the New Year gets here, we'd schedule it, and we're still waiting to do that. I figured I'd give them more than a few days, maybe call next week or the week after and see where we're at with that. The new generator for this building for the COPS grant has been ordered. It'll take about seven months to receive it, was the initial word that I heard. I know we talked a little bit about that last time, too. The sales rep for Goheen's, where we ordered our backdoor truck, contacted me over the weekend and said that they are still waiting for the chassis to be built. And once they receive it, it'll be 70 to 80 days for them to do their portion of the install. So he said that they're going to get an update probably next week on how far along the chassis is, and then I'll have more information on that. Last Tuesday, 12/26, 9:00 AM, we were called for a water main break in front of 405 Wyeth Drive. Took approximately seven hours to complete that repair. And that was our last day of the Christmas break there in between Christmas and New And during that repair, the vac truck suffered some damage and had to make a parts run. And we found other broken parts while we were doing that repair, so we had to order more parts. So unfortunately, we still have to repair the old one until we receive it.
Yeah, right.
So I just didn't want there to be any questions about those bills. But beyond that, that's all I have for you all. If you have any questions for me, happy to leave in my dissection.
Any questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. Shirley, do you have anything to report?
The only thing I have is I was able to send out absentee applications for the -- actually, they're all -- every election is on that application. So those have gone out, and we're getting them back.
Great.
So, yeah.
And how about you, police chief Kyle Box?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Have a couple things to report to you. Last meeting, you folks approved new modems and antennas for the police cars for the EK computers. Happy to report back that, one, I was able to do the install. I ran a couple things by a couple knowledgeable people that I worked with, and they said, yeah, just do this, this. It worked. So that'll save us some money on the three separate modems and antennas to install. But I think the better news is that we don't need the new antennas that you folks approved to be purchased. They're sitting up in a box that hasn't been opened. I'm going to return them, and we don't have to run that install. It's going to be more work than what the modems are going to be to install. So we're going to save about $1,500 off of what you folks approved.
Thank you.
Grateful to be able to do that and save some money. And I just might not be in uniform, or I might be at my house doing it in my garage room where my tools are. But regardless, we'll get those installed. Happy to report that I went to an annual meeting, middle of December, sat next to the Bancroft Police Chief, who is a full-time officer in Argentine Township, asked if I was hiring any part-time officers. I said, hey, I'm always looking for part-time officers. He said, I got the guy for you. Started the conversation, did the background, and happy to report that tomorrow I plan on swearing in Tony Matthews as a part-time police officer. He's full-time in Argentine, and he's on a rotation that allows him to work our open night shift. So he is only part-time, but those shifts that are open, he will be able to cover as they fit for his schedule. So pretty excited about that. Really good background, really good report from everybody that he's worked for, and even the current chief down in Argentine. I talked with Dan, and he had something positive to say. So excited about that. And just a winter reminder that everybody needs to clear off sidewalks within 24 hours of the last snow and make sure that it's free of any snow or ice. And also, we are still constantly writing overnight parking violations. So no parking in the city between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
On the street.
On the street. Yep. Any questions for me? No. All right. Thank you much.
Any committee reports tonight?
Just a quick one. The ordinance committee will be meeting this coming Monday, 8th, at 10:00 AM here in Council Chambers to review some questions that have come up since our last meeting back in October and see whether or not we need to move forward with any other potential revisions. Monday, the 8th, at 10:00 AM.
Any other committee reports? Presentation and approval of the bills is next.
Remove that we approved the bills as presented in the opinion of your authorities.
Second.
Motion from Bob, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Seeing no old business, we'll move right into new business. And I did speak to Jeff Codet at Codet Hardware and asked him if he would be willing to serve on the pension committee, and he said he would. So I would like to appoint Jeff Codet to that position, looking to council for approval.
Remove that we approved the appointment of Jeff Codet, owner of Codet's True Value Hardware, to the pension committee with the term expiring October 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob's -- excuse me, from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Then moving into a discussion about the pension committee. When Shirley told me after Larry volunteered to serve on it that he already did serve on it, I looked at that list, and the pension committee is -- the people who serve on that is -- are assigned by policy. It's not a charter assignment. And those that are right now to serve on that are the mayor, the chairman of finance and ordinance, a council member, a local business person, and then a city employee. My thought is that our council members serve on a lot of committees because we have standing committees. And to double up on that, when we also have a local business person and a city employee, to me seems a little redundant, but that's opened up for discussion by you guys. My thought would be to remove the council member knowing that the chairman of finance is a council member. So what are your thoughts on that?
It doesn't say council member is chairman of the finance committee and another. It doesn't say it has to have two council members, correct?
It does today.
It doesn't say two.
It just says mayor, chairman of finance and ordinance, council member underneath that, local business person, city employee. This is how it's listed out right now.
So it could be, I mean, we could say the council member, the chairman of the finance committee is a council member.
That was my thought. It is.
And that takes care of that requirement.
That's my thought.
That's how I would read that.
Yeah. And since it's a policy?
Yeah, it doesn't have to change.
You guys can change it anyway, so.
I'm fine with that.
Doesn't make sense to me. I don't think.
Any other thoughts on that? You're good with that, Jacob?
Yes.
Okay. So Shirley, what we'll do is remove council member from the pension committee so that it will be mayor, chairman of finance and ordinance, local business person, and city employee. Okay. Thank you very much. That will help.
Committee meets so infrequently, I don't think that it's met since I've been the chair of the ordinance slash finance committee. So when I volunteered last meeting, I hadn't looked at the mayor.
The last meeting that I'm aware of was before I became mayor, so three years ago. I attended the meeting at Mayor Hubert's invitation because it was coming up on when I would become mayor, and so I went to it, but they don't meet very often. Okay, so that's good. Moving on in our agenda then, next we have a discussion that we were gathering some information about our COPS grant in regard to the security and the rest of that money. So Kevin's done some investigation.
I put some stuff out there. I haven't received a whole lot back yet. Kyle was unaware of the situation. I need to sit down with him and figure out the priority list. I sent him the information today, so we're a little behind because of the holidays and that. I apologize for not being prepared, but there's still more work to do on this, so I don't have a whole lot for you. I did reach out to the companies. I've gotten one response, and he said they're willing to do whatever it takes. They'll work within our budget, they'll use lesser products, they'll do whatever it takes to get our business, whatever we need to do.
Which company was that?
That was the Allied. Yeah, Allied Universal.
Okay.
Their quote, as it stands right now, is $80,990. And they want to know our budget. They can tailor it to our budget, and then if we eliminate some of the projects, I think that we should be able to do a substantial amount of it. So it's looking promising. I'm not saying it's going to be a lost cause, so we'll figure out which direction we need to go in, and then we'll present that to council.
So you and Kyle will work on what the priorities would be?
Or what we can cut.
Okay.
Or maybe even do so much in each facility and just eliminate some items or, you know. So we got to look at that.
We did ask Megan to investigate how long we had to spend this money, and her email to me said that the project period runs from 12/29/22 to 12/31/24.
So before that is there.
So we have.
Do we have any stipulations in the grant that says if you don't do all this, you can't use the money? We can tailor it to what, now that the costs have skyrocketed in a sense?
As long as we use it for the projects of that type, it doesn't necessarily say that these bids that we submitted, they have to go for that.
Okay, that's.
We can tailor it to our needs, and as long as it goes for security upgrades?
We're good.
Then, yes. That was my understanding. We've talked a little bit about it throughout the course of getting the quotes and going through the process. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that that is what was determined when reading through there, as long as it's for that type of upgrades.
Okay.
Is that your understanding, Megan? Yeah. Okay, good. Any other questions? And for Kevin, we'll just move this to the next meeting, and when they have more information, we'll discuss it again. Okay.
Thank you. You just know the timeline is going to be fairly quick.
Next on our agenda is downtown beautification, and this is on our agenda at the request of Jacob. He's interested in heading up a committee to do some downtown beautification. You want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I just think post-tornado community involvement, some of the stuff I've learned being on council. I think, one, I think we put something out there as a parks committee maybe, or a new committee. You know, there might be public interest. I know I grew up in Duran. They would do this, you know, a couple times a year. City would buy donuts, and I used to volunteer out when I was in high school. We'd garden beds, lay mulch. So just an idea as we start the year, maybe, you know, try to gather up some volunteers and clean up downtown. Not that downtown isn't clean, but just an idea.
The DPW has always done that.
Okay.
Planters, they did the overseeing of those planters being done. We did have a small committee that did for a few years, but that's kind of dissipated. The thing that I'd like us to make sure that we do is clean up or decorate, if you will, both of our commercial areas. I don't think we should just focus on what we call downtown, but also the commercial area along Lansing Road.
Like a highway pickup? Lansing Highway?
Well, the commercial businesses along there, I mean, if we're going to plant flowers down here, we need to plant flowers there.
Sure.
Or there's a sign on the south end of town to very near Bath Road, and there's a sign, a welcome to Perry kind of sign, out at Lansing Road. Maybe there should be flowers planted at both of those signs, you know, maybe that would do it. There has been a much larger project briefly discussed, but it's so expensive to run lighting along Lansing Road. You'll see that if you look at Alsace's and then to the east, there are street lamps, street lights, and that was done by the Perry Township DDA. I mean, they saved for 22 years to get enough money to put those up, but they did it. We don't have a DDA, and we have investigated it, I think, three different times and determined that it's just not something that we qualify for, is to have a DDA. But there are grants out there. I mean, and if you were so inclined to want to head up trying to obtain some grant money for lighting along Lansing Road, other beautification-type things downtown, maybe looking into, you know, whatever your committee thinks would be good. Anybody else have some thoughts on all that?
Yeah, I think to your point, too, we're looking at the DDA and then the business association potential. About half of our city's businesses don't reside in what we call the conventional central downtown business area. So to your point, whatever we do, we need to try to incorporate as many of those in that umbrella as possible.
Yeah. It's kind of broken up. We have the floral gallery there on Roth Street, just off Main, and then we have the Sung Tan Place.
Sung Tan.
Yes, that, that's next to Rite Aid, and then Rite Aid, of course. So there's that little business section and the car dealership across the road. Maybe better called a truck dealership because that's mostly what they have. But then you're out to Lansing Road, and there's a lot of businesses along there. So I think we need to focus in both areas.
Yeah.
Yeah? Do you want to find your own committee, or how do you want to do that?
I'm new, so I'm just, you know, looking for direction. I don't know what processes or structures are already in place, but.
But you mentioned the parks committee. Do you want to talk to the parks committee to see if they want to be involved in that?
Sure.
Or do you want to do that first and then let us know what you find out there?
Yeah.
And if not, maybe then we need to post something on the website and ask people to volunteer to be on the beautification committee?
Project Kevin, too.
Yeah.
Interception with Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk with Kevin because they, like I say, they've always oversaw that, the flowers and things that are planted downtown, water bottles and all that stuff.
Sure. Your help is welcome.
Yes. I was going to say, Kevin, I learned about that when I brought it up. I was under the impression a local business was handling the flowers and the flowers downtown. So I was mistaken. So I think, you know, starting with the parks committee, I know Megan and Chad, that'll be a good way to get people involved, but, you know, my thought was focus on low-hanging fruit, and if we get a couple volunteers, just try to knock some stuff out and take the momentum and keep going.
Yeah. And you know, I didn't even mention Carl's IGA, or is it IGA? Whatever it is. Carl's Grocery Store. Because that's right smack there, you know, in the middle, and it's big, and a lot of people go there.
Right there.
Yeah, the school's right there. So, I mean, there could be a lot done that would maybe kind of tie things together, too, because we are so chopped up.
Sure.
So if you'd like to.
It took some notes, yeah.
Yeah. Talk with the parks committee and then let us know when you have something to report from that and how you want to proceed from there and so forth and so on, and maybe meet with Kevin and get his thoughts on that.
Awesome. I can hear that.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Well, I know you'd all like to stay longer, but is there any other business that may come before council at this time? Hearing non-winning council discussions, observations from council. Larry did make an observation early on that this is noteworthy. We haven't had anything from the ordinance committee tonight to read through or do anything with.
First meeting in a long time, we haven't had at least one or two ordinance meetings to discuss.
Very busy with that. Do we have agenda items for our next meeting? I would say talking about the security and the COPS grant.